Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone with us in council chambers this evening, as well as those that are joining us on Zoom for our first meeting of the year 2024. Happy New Year to everyone. And we will move right along, and at this point, we are at our agenda adoption. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda?
Person.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. At this time, Councilman Zevon will lead our invocation for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this gorgeous afternoon, and just ask that, Father, you keep us safe as we move into tomorrow and the threat of inclement weather. God, just keep all of our staff and and crew that's out in this and keep all of us safe now as we move through this. Father, we ask you to be with us this evening. God, give us wisdom as we go about the town's business and just ask that, God, you keep it civil and let us have a great evening this evening. We pray it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. But everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up this evening is a special presentation. This is a presentation where our state representatives are presenting budget appropriations for the Harrisburg YMCA, and we are very pleased to have with us this evening Representative Kevin Crutchfield, Representative Kristin Baker, and Representative Diamond State Williams, along with our Executive Director of the Harrisburg Lab, Brett Crosby, our Associate Executive Director Christine Bowle, and hopefully, our CEO Jamie Morgan will be joining us. He is on his way but stuck in a little bit of traffic. For the last year, along with several Harrisburg residents and Y Board members have advocated for this new build, and we were so thankful to be welcomed at the state legislative offices to talk about this. So we're happy for you to be here this evening.
I guess we'll speak from here. Well, here's a team. That's what it takes in Raleigh is a team, right? So one of the things we get to do that's kind of the most exciting after all the laborious work that we do up there is we get to do appropriation checks, presentations, and our team in Cabarrus County works really well together. You know, when you, when you're up there, they look at you and they say, look, you get five requests or you get 10 requests, and we put all those in, and you look in and say, I don't have enough room. In my case, I had two counties, so I had to say, okay, Kristin, how can we get all this together? Can you take this request? Can we do that request? And Paul Newton, can you take this request? We really all worked together with Diamond State Williams to, to get this stuff appropriated. It's not an easy task because while we put in all the requests, ultimately, we don't get to decide. It goes to the Appropriations Committee, and they look it over and they decide whether they want to agree with it or not. So having really good relationships with those folks is paramount in this process of getting these things appropriate. So our team of representatives, we were able to bring back to Cabarrus County $185 million in appropriations. That's a great, huge investment. When you have surplus in your budget, you have a way to invest it back in your community. Things even better, it's an exciting thing that we get to do. So I'm here with these young folks and get to present to these fine folks this rubber check. No, not really. It's good. I wouldn't take it to the bank. So here we are.
Kevin, y'all want to come out to the front?
Yes, ma'am.
We're moving, you guys. Thank you. The soil will be, will be very wet tomorrow, so that might make shovel digging a little easier. We also wanted to thank Senator Johnson and Senator Newton, who could not be with us this evening.
Absolutely. Just about to say that. They were definitely part of that group. It's a, it takes a village in Raleigh, it really does, and to get everybody together and get everybody on the same page and get this stuff done. So we're lucky in Cabarrus County to have such a great delegation up there to do this stuff. So congratulations to Harrisburg for getting this money.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have our Transportation Bonds and Public Works update from Mallory.
Hello. Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight to present on our Transportation Bond Project Updates. As I was putting this together, I was reflecting back to the last time I gave this presentation in October '22. So a lot has changed, and I'm excited to share some of our progress. So to recap, the transportation bonds, in 2017, the town passed a referendum for $4 million in transportation funding. We, as staff, split that money into five buckets, so to speak. About $1 million in sidewalks, about $1 million in traffic mitigation, $300,000 for greenways, 1.1 million for roadway improvements, and $400,000 for the Highway 49 improvements. And these are kind of high-level numbers. The green checkmark denotes things that are already done. So the Caldwell Road Sidewalk and the Harris Depot Sidewalk, those are done. We've completed about $1 million in paving. We've done a lot of striping throughout town, and then we've completed the Caldwell Road feasibility study. And then I'm going to touch on all these projects a little bit more depth. So looking back at sidewalks, we've seen some good progress on sidewalks. So as I mentioned, the Caldwell and Harris Depot are completed. We've started stalling sidewalk Phase One, which runs from the entrance to Harrisburg Elementary School to roughly Raging Ridge Road, about the extents of those two development projects. Phase Two runs from Raging Ridge Road to Flowers Farm. Phase One, we anticipate having done next month, so we're very excited about the progress on that. And Phase Two, we're bidding this year and will be completed by fall 2024. Hickory Ridge Road Sidewalk, we did a feasibility study back in the fall of 2022, which used the bond money or the transportation funding. We were actually awarded a grant for design and construction last year, or year before last now. We're in 2024. We anticipate having that design contract on the March, maybe April 2024 Agenda for Approval. We're working through the request for responses from bidders, and all that goes through DOT review, since it's a DOT partially funded project. But what we did with that bond funding was take $35,000 and turn it into a $1.6 million grant. So we're incredibly proud of that. All bond expenditures are complete for that project. For our traffic mitigation projects, we had a few. The first was Cambridge Drive Extension. This was going to provide a vehicular connection from Town Center to the Davis Creek subdivision, just giving another access to 49 through Town Center. Design is complete, and we're expecting to bid that project in the next 60 days. Roberta Road Improvements, which I have pictured on the right of the screen. This will add a median, which I've shown in green, so it's kind of a future picture of what that median will look like. On Roberta Road, prohibiting left turns in and out of some of those developments just for safety, and then it'll add an additional turn lane at parallel to improve capacity. Design is complete. We're working through easement acquisition and expecting to bid that in the next 60 days as well. On Greenways, we wrapped up design of the Davis Creek Greenway. We're going to bid that concurrently with the Cambridge Drive Extension, just to get some economy of scale by bidding those two projects together. We're working with a consultant to finalize those bid documents, and we expect to start this spring, so kind of same timeline as Cambridge Drive. The Back Creek Greenway, as you recall, this was an area that we had targeted for that bond funding, but with the delays on the WASCAP project, we weren't going to be able to hit our schedule. So the WASCAP project had a large sewer interceptor that was going to run along the easement. With the, with the project getting delayed due to the sewer capacity issues in the county, there was no way for us to build that project without it getting eventually torn out when they do come in. So what we did was, we sought to identify alignments that didn't overlap with the proposed sewer interceptor, and we're working to establish those in budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. So you'll be hearing about some of those at your retreat and other budget meetings. We don't have any additional bond funding scheduled for the Back Creek Greenway. To recap, the roadway improvements, which I went over at the beginning as complete, we spent an extra $1 million on paving projects throughout town. So we like to think we're caught up on paving somewhat in town, and we added a lot of striping throughout town on Z-Max Boulevard. We added a strike on Patricia, replaced some of the parking stalls, so a lot of striping throughout town. And then the Caldwell Road Extension Feasibility Study is another one that has a lot of work ahead, but not a lot of bond dollars ahead. We reviewed the preliminary alignment and environmental study with the feasibility study that gave us some really good project guidance, and we were awarded a grant for design and construction in September 2022. So bond expenditure is complete for this project, and I really like this, how we just turn money into more money. But $64,000 in bond funding into a $4.9 million transportation grant, so also very proud of that. On the Highway 49 Transportation Improvements, we sought to improve the Highway 49 in concurrence with the Highway 49 Corridor Plan. For Phase One, this consisted of a removal of a left turn lane from Highway 49 into the Food Lion Shopping Center, and then extension of Financial Way, also connecting into that shopping center. We obtained all of our easements and permits as of December 2023 and expect to bid this month with construction starting next summer. I'd like to time that for when school is out, so things are a little bit more peaceful. So next steps for us, design on bond projects is wrapped up. We're moving into construction phase, as you can see. So we have a busy spring and summer ahead of us. And then bond-funded construction contracts that you'll expect to see in the next couple of months on the council agendas would be Stallings Road Sidewalk Phase Two, Cambridge Drive Extension and Davis Creek Greenway, which we'll bid together, Roberta Road Improvements and Highway 49 Phase One. And then as far as our grant-funded design contracts, I felt like I needed to include those as well. The Highway 49 Phase Two, you'll be seeing some design, a design contract up for that soon, and Caldwell Road Extension and Hickory Ridge Road Sidewalk. Questions and comments welcomed at this time.
Real quick on the Financial Way, is the businesses getting better off at the time that's going to be closing or as of?
For the turn into the shopping center, yeah, so we've worked very closely with the, the owner of the parcel, and he granted the easement, so we'll be very close with them as we work through that project. We'll, we'll probably do some additional signage for them somewhere else, like help them with moving their sign or adding another sign on Financial Way. So we discussed that as we went through easement acquisition.
And I apologize for asking because I missed it. Does that open up next to Sherwin-Williams?
Yes. So that Financial Way Extension is the, is a empty parcel between McDonald's and Sherwin. So that'll connect into the Food Lion Shopping Center.
Thank you.
Yep.
Could you go back to that picture? I want to have a question.
Sure.
Yeah. This one. Yeah. So I think when we were discussing this, we were saying, instead of creating this green space that would need to be maintained, we were going to extend it so that people going left could stack up longer. Is that going to happen?
Yes, good catch. I was worried someone was going to catch that if I recycled the picture, but we are planning to extend that turn lane for additional capacity. So it won't be, it won't be green. It'll just, I just, I didn't have a better image. Sorry about that.
As long as it's going to be done.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. And then the title of the special presentation is also Public Works Updates. If you had any questions of public works, I'd be happy to answer that as well.
Well, I was going to say in council comments, but since it's public works, thank you for whoever was responsible for removing the stop sign on School Circle. I do believe people are learning. They're not flying down through there. They're going very patiently, but I do think it's moving traffic along very easily off of 49, which allows the traffic to move quicker. So good job.
Yes, and I'm going to steal Captain Miss Murris Thunder a little bit. We, we see everybody's presentation early, but he, we've done a speed study in that corridor, and next month I'll be, not presenting, it'll likely go on the consent agenda, but a drop in speed for Martha Melvin, which runs into school.
And now, I know I emailed you, but I'll tell you, thank you again, you, Mary, and Zach. I know you guys got in and out last week with clearing Epcun, and I just appreciate y'all jumping in so quick and addressing that. You know, one of the things that I shared with you, Mallory, was that at times, the residents feel it's us versus them. And by you guys jumping in that quick, it brought down the us versus them. I know they've asked a lot of us to give them some documentation back and minutes and stuff like that, but I just appreciate you being there to respond in such a quick manner that I feel like you got it back in the right place.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mallory? Thank you, Mallory. Next up this evening, we have public comments. I will go to those that signed up in person first, and then we will check in with anyone joining us via Zoom. I do have the signup sheet. First up, we have Representative Diamond State Williams. You'll just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Representative Diamond State Williams. My address is 6626 Berkwood Court, Harrisburg. And last month, while everyone was getting sworn in, we had the awesome opportunity to listen to the youth council and everything that they have going on. When we, when I was on council and we first thought about doing the youth council in 2018, the direction that the council, youth council is going is absolutely where we wanted it to go. Thank you for continuing to invest in them. These kids have so much to give to our community, and it is really good to see that our business community is going to be helping them with internships and apprenticeships so they can come back to our community after they graduate high school, after they graduate college, whatever they choose to do to help us in this community. I think it's a great investment. So thank you. Thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Representative Williams. Next up, we have Mike Branham. If you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Evening, Town Council. Mike Branham, 5662 Berry Ridge Drive. Short and sweet tonight. Just need an update on the water bill budget thing that y'all were working on.
Okay, we'll do it during finance report. Thank you, Mr. Branham. Next up, we have Brian Etcheverria.
Hello, Brian Etcheverria, 3940 Ball Bowl Avenue. That's Harrisburg. My family and I have lived in Harrisburg since 2006, and I had the chance to speak out at our school board about the opportunities our children have regardless of their skin color, how strong our daughters are, and against hate in general. So I'm really pleased to be here tonight before our town council. It's no secret that our government is infected with corruption, political games, and bribery. From DC to Cabarrus County, the self-interest, the disregard for law, and trickery used by political elites against us is becoming more and more unacceptable. For example, if an elected official opposes a common sense heartbeat bill, approves of same-sex marriage, wants to legalize drugs, advances a vision to socialize healthcare, tries to put casinos in family-oriented communities, and as a slap passes legislation to weaken the Republican Party, it would be obvious that that person is politically liberal, perhaps a rank-and-file Democrat. So ask yourself, why is that person in a Republican primary? And I'm not the only one who recognizes this. Liberals who supported my opponent have been donating to his campaign since last year. Liberals are with my opponent. Cabarrus County Republicans are conservatives and family-oriented. At this pivotal time in our history, we don't need self-interested corrupt liberal establishment types masquerading as conservatives, sabotaging our way of life and our children's future in exchange for anything of personal profit, political favors, or popularity. We, the people, deserve better. We're an America-first community because our families are first, and everyone agrees with that. I am running for the North Carolina State House because of what we all want life to be like in years to come. Our education system should be top 10 in the nation, not 25 out of 30. We want to walk safely down the street with our loved ones, our children, and teachers secure at school without fear. And we all want to keep more of the money that we earn. We're tired of being crushed by inflation and giving 10% of our annual income to state, county, and city governments. That's not counting what we send to DC. So while the political establishment plays games and fights against you, I'm answering the call to fight for you. Here I am. Send me. I ask for your vote and support. I need your help to win. Go to FamiliesOurStory.com to volunteer and donate. My name is Brian Etcheverria. Thank you very much. Have an amazing evening.
Thank you, Mr. Etcheverria. Next up on the list, we have Kevin Crutchfield.
Good evening. Thank you, Kevin Crutchfield, 9817 Mount Pleasant Road, Midland, North Carolina. So he was talking about me. I'm the liberal. The guy who's been a conservative since I turned 16 years old when I registered as a Republican. You know, I moved to Harrisburg in 1981 when IBM was making a big charge down this direction. I've lived, my parents lived out on Rocky River Road. And like a lot of college students, when I came home, I moved in with mom and dad for a little while. Turned out to be the right thing to do because my dad later suffered a stroke and required my assistance to be there. But to call me a liberal is to not know me. I'm a very conservative person. You know, to get anything done, wipe the check presentation we brought tonight, it takes people that are willing to collaborate. No one person can walk up there and stand on that mound and pound his fist and get what they want. They can't call everybody names. It doesn't work. We're not, you know, we don't identify with people that call us names. Usually you resort to calling people names when you have nothing else to run on. What I have to run on is a record. I'm a small business owner right here in Cabarrus County. I have over 45 employees. I started this business 25 years ago with a pickup truck and a ladder. I know what it takes to build a business. I know what it takes to give back. I know what it takes to serve. I was a youth soccer coach for years in this county, baseball coach and football coach. All my kids went to Northwest Cabarrus. Two of them played college football. That doesn't happen because I'm a liberal. It happens because I know what work is. I know what it takes. So Harrisburg is now in District 82. That's, that's the district I'm running for. I currently have District 83, and I have a long list of record of accomplishments. I'm happy to share those with you. They're also on my website, thevocavencrutchfield.com. But I will continue to fight for you. I didn't take this position because I need it. I'm perfectly capable to retire today and go home to Midland and my farm and live the rest of my life. But I chose to do this because I have family, three sons, nine grandkids. All of you have grandkids, and what I'm doing in Raleigh is I'm fighting for them. I passed the bill to protect young women in sports. I have nine grandchildren, five of them are granddaughters, and I promised them when I went to Raleigh that I would protect them. I would do what I could to get legislation passed to do that. There's a lot of people, you know, I'm a heartbeat guy, right? It's what I believe in, heartbeat. The fact of the matter is, it's not about me. You didn't elect me for go, to go give my opinion. You elected me to go represent you. So when I go to Raleigh, I might feel one way, but if you tell me as my constituents that this is how you really feel, that's my job to represent you. I'd appreciate your support, appreciate your vote, and I look forward to serving you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Crutchfield. Last on our signup, we have Franklin Watkins.
Hello, everybody. I'm Franklin Watkins, pastor of Oak Grove Baptist Church, 200 Sims Parkway, Harrisburg, North Carolina. I've got a lighter note here. I'm not even talking about liberals or conservatives, but I'm here to talk about citizens of this, of this, this community. And I'm concerned and want to make sure that we are staying with the precedents that we've set in terms of selecting the mayor pro temp. And I think that, again, the highest vote getter, receiver should receive that position. Just wanted to state my opinion. God bless.
Thank you, Reverend Watkins. That is all that signed up. But is there anyone else that did not have a chance, have a chance to sign up and would like to speak during public comments before we move to online? Brett Crosby, just state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name's Brett Crosby. I'm at 224 Ridge Drive here in Harrisburg, and also the Executive Director of the Harrisburg YMCA. Did want to publicly thank our state officials for the, the donation for the new YMCA. This was a lot of hard work. Mayor Teague and several of us went to Raleigh this year. Every one of these representatives came out to the park to see this project and truly believe in what we're doing, and that all started right here in the council chambers to get there. So a lot of collaboration to get there. We, just a quick update where we're at. We're working as hard as we can, trying to keep things moving quickly, working with the town, county staff, trying to get through permitting, and also working with the builder to finalize things. So hopefully, you'll be seeing an update from us. I'll say soon. For now, we're trying as hard as we can to get that done. And we're still, this project is going to be a 23-ish million-dollar project. We're not aware of a YMCA being built in the state of North Carolina for that amount. So for Harrisburg to pull that off has just been an amazing testament to a lot of the people in this room to get there. We're still a couple million short. We're still trying to get there. You know, still have ways to buy bricks and founding memberships, naming opportunities just to try to close that gap. That's going to truly dictate the success this YMCA has. So I just wanted to give that quick update, and again, thank you to everybody up there and all the state representatives for your support. We wouldn't be here without you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brett, and I would like to recognize, yes, Jamie Morgan in the back who is our CEO of Rowan Cabarrus. He was stuck in traffic and came up for the check presentation, so I think they're going to try to grab a picture before you set up. Round two. Jamie, hopefully those traffic improvements that you heard about earlier will help speed that along. Perfect. You're welcome. I saw you walk in right as they finished that, so. All right, that is all we had in person. Is there anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to speak during public comment? You can raise your hand, and we can call on you. Okay, I do not see anyone that would like to speak. So we will move right along into our consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion to approve. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Communications, and we will start with our esteemed Town Manager update.
Because there's people in the audience, I'm esteemed. See, I appreciate that, that compliment, Mayor. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Council, those in attendance. I have a relatively short report this evening, mostly because everybody knows I am a tried and true Ohio State guy, and I would like to see that team up north get beat this evening or at least the second half. So I'll try to keep it as short as possible. I'll remind the council, we have the upcoming retreat where we'll be sending out an advanced agenda for expectation and priority setting. So that'll kind of be the theme, is just to spend that day. In the previous years, we had done goals, mission, value, really looking at getting into what those priorities and expectations are so that we can get a quick turnaround on the budget, which you guys have gotten invites to that. So if you have not been able to respond, please get that back to us. Any dates that are just absolutely out, we'll take a look, and if they're significant dates where we can't brief you in another setting, then we'll go ahead and try to remove those, but we'd like to get that knocked, locked down as quickly as possible. And remind the community that we'll have that agenda published well in advance, so we'll have all of our budget meetings. Those are open to the public. We encourage everybody to attend those in person. If you're not able to attend those in person, those will be on Zoom as well. So you can watch that from the comfort of your own home. A lot of our information is included in those budget meetings. So if you have questions throughout the year on how the priorities are set, or, you know, how we set funding for police, fire, transportation, where our revenue comes from, that, that's all openly discussed, and we spend generally 25, 30 hours of time on that. So again, encourage everybody to attend those. January 22nd, Councilman Dillinger, Harmony will be starting the light at Rocky River. I know that that comes up each month, so Mallory was kind enough to give me that update that we can pass along to the community. So anybody interested in that project, January 22nd, we should start seeing some earth moved out there, or at least some activity. Little update for the, for the year, and again, I'll, I'll be as brief as possible on this, but as of December 21st, we had 396 homes built in the town. That is a record. we had 396 homes built in the town. That is a record. So that's the most homes we've ever built in a year for Harrisburg and that's in spite of the housing market and the interest climate. And I think that really is a testament to what we've done as a town and how desirable we are as a community that despite our best efforts to make sure that we're building, you know, responsibly and that we have the highest standards. It certainly does not slow down the desire in the community. So I, I believe when the numbers come in, that'll be well, well, the 400, excuse me, as that gives us that update generally weekly and, and it just moves along. So, but we're proud of that and we've been able to continue from a staff standpoint this year, providing all of these services in a very tight labor market. Generally, if you look at our numbers and we do this during the budget process and we'll probably highlight it a little bit more this year. But our, our per capita employee number is, is way below our market average. We, we are really the definition of doing more with less and our staff this year, not only when we're fully staffed, they do more with less. With, with the folks that are able to, to move along with their careers, some of our especially more highly desirable professional employees in the, in the technical fields that are pulled from, pulled to the private sector. It's been difficult, right? So our, our staff is not missed a beat. We haven't missed anything. We have had record years and home builds, solid waste collection, investment in streets and transportation, investment in public safety. And those are all things we should be very proud of, both as a staff and as a community. And, you know, I know a few people left, but I also did want to thank our state officials that came this evening and we'd mentioned, you know, the number of 185 million in that presentation that the state bill brought back to the county. And a good portion of that is directed here in Harrisburg. And in addition to that, 185 million in state appropriations. We had previously reported some 27 million in direct appropriations through federal grants that we were able to, to get in the previous year. We've continued that success into this year. Last year was the most successful year in the history of the town for getting grants. This year was the second most successful year. So pretty tough to top the 15, 16 million that, that we had gotten awarded previously. But getting several million dollars a year when the typical year before the last two years was maybe 50,000, 100,000. Something in that range is, is something that we're certainly extremely proud of. And the, the last thing we're really proud of is we've been able to maintain what I think is, is the unique Harrisburg community feel and meet all those goals and values that, that we've set together and stick to our mission despite remaining the sixth fastest growing community and one of the fastest growing states in America. So that really all just is a testament to the employees that we have here. They've done a fantastic job and you guys will see a lot of that data when we present it out in the budget. That it's it for my update and I'll take any questions that you have.
Key Rob, any questions for Rob before Mr. Lee comes up for finance report? Okay, Brian, you were up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So first I just want to point out to Brett, if he's still in the room, that, I don't know. The check was made out to the town of Harrisburg, so we can cash that and I'll get it to the wire as soon as possible. I promise it'll make its way to you. So that was exciting to see. But this is your finance report as of the end of December. So 50% of the way through our fiscal year. You can see here that we have gotten all of our revenue and departments on this first page into the green. So that's good news there. Tax collections, as I mentioned last month, we always get a really large deposit from the county in December. And that did take place this year. So you can see 44% of our property taxes were deposited this month, which brought us up to 65%. And that really brought the general fund up to about 60% collected for the year. So in really good shape for our general fund revenues. Both the water and sewer fund and the stormwater fund are right at 50%. So everything is going well there on the revenue side. The general fund departments for the general government portion of those departments is, is all in the green, ranging from about the low 30s up to right at 50%. So no budgetary concerns throughout those departments. This is a look at our remaining general fund departments and our two enterprise funds. You can see that the remaining general fund departments are all in the green, that same range of about 30 to 50%. No one's over except for Parks and Rec and we've been seeing that whittle down as we've worked our way out of event and the beginning of athletics seasons. The water and sewer fund is at 43% and the stormwater fund at 34%. The last bit of information I'd like to give you here under operations are the salaries across the entire town. And those are up 6% this month to 45% for the year. So tracking well there as well. Now we'll move into our projects. This first page is a look at our single year projects. Our first one that I want to highlight here is the fuel system replacement that's handled by the IT department. That's shown at about 50%. That system was ordered as expected in December and should be installed by the end of this month. The next is the ADA sidewalk program. The, all the improvements that were planned for town center have been completed. So if you walk through some of the sidewalks here, you'll see the, the grinding where some of those, some of the two pieces were meeting at an angle. And so as a safety move, they grind that down and we don't have to actually replace the entire sidewalk. So you'll see that throughout town center. The second part of that project for this year is sidewalks and crosswalks in Rocky River Crossing. So that'll get you from the new sidewalks that have just been laid as part of the development in Rocky River Crossing over to the side of the street with the playground. So I have a safe cross of the street there. And lastly, the Wellington Lane stormwater upgrade. This is at 90% as of the end of the year. The new pipe was installed and the contractor was patching the roadway the first week of January. So this project is probably wrapped up or within a couple of days. This is a look at our facility projects, multi-year projects that are in design. Not too, too much movement throughout the month of December, but the two here that are grouped together are federally funded 8020 grants. The Highway 49 improvements and Caldwell Road Phase 2, those are both shown at 8%. I mentioned last month that those proposals were received from the bidders. Staff has evaluated and made selections for engineering firms there and have sent those to NCDOT for approval. Here's a look at our multi-year projects that are under construction. And as Mallory mentioned, the sidewalks on Stallings Road, as of December 31st, read about 65% complete with about 300 linear feet remaining. That's gotten even closer over the last two weeks. I'm sure you've seen the progress out there. So that project is moving along very nicely. And the last one on this page is the Cabarrus Woods Phase One Waterline Upgrade. Construction began in December as planned and will take about a year to complete. This is a look at our equipment projects and there was no movement in the month of December. So just informational here. Our vehicle projects, we had a little bit of movement on vehicles. We had two vehicles that were on last month's agenda. The replacement town manager vehicle and a replacement vehicle in engineering, both of those were approved last month. And so they've both been ordered under the state contract and should be delivered within a couple of months. And lastly, our professional services projects, the strategic economic development plan is about 45% complete. The stakeholder engagement meetings were held throughout December and the consultants are providing an engagement summary to staff in early January. And we'll discuss options for a public forum and the next steps for that plan's development and the timing for this project. It shows the end of January there. That was the expectation that before the project was, was ever bid out or under, under contract. Now that it's under contract and we've had the, the timeline established, that's looking more like the end of March to wrap up that project. And lastly, the Parks Master Plan, the consultants are wrapping up their data collection by attempting to get enough survey responses. So another push for surveys was sent out over the holidays that you probably received. So anyone who's listening, you hasn't responded to that, go ahead and get your feedback into them. They need to get a statistically relevant sample to be able to provide the, the type of data that we need to make decisions on. So they're still looking for a little bit more response on that survey. And lastly, the ARPA update with more interest earned this month on our unspent funds. We're up to about 960,000. That needs to be appropriated within the next 11 months and spent within the next three years. And so budget billing, we have, we've signed up various accounts for budget billing in our software. And we've worked with both our software vendor and our print bill vendor to make sure that everything looks how we want. But what we're having to do is run through all the iterations of what could happen. What does signing up look like? What does amending your agreement look like? What does it look like if you pay it off early? If you get, if you get too far ahead of schedule on the budget billing and then ultimately when you either roll it over to the next year and your, your payment adjust. Or if you roll out of the program and either get a refund applied to your account or you owe money as a result of the program. So we're having to go through a couple of months where we see what all of those options look like to make sure we're, you know, we're communicating what the program is going to look like from the start, make sure everyone understands it and make sure that the way it's presented on the bill is understandable and what we want it to look like. So we, we have about one more month left to see what that looks like from both email and print bills. And then we should be ready to roll that program out. So, and we hope that when you sign up for that, you'll also sign up for auto draft, which is a free way to pay us.
Mr. Brandon, did that answer your question? Okay. You're welcome.
All right. With that, I would welcome any questions.
Any questions for Brian this evening? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have our esteemed Captain Meesmer. It's the word of the evening to give our law enforcement update.
Mayor Council, really good news tonight. We have zero felonies, zero violent crime, zero officer complaints, none this year long. We have survived it so far. So going to December 2023, that's a whole different story. Let's get there. Law enforcement related activities, 2,862, 1,944 security checks, checking your home and businesses, 568 traffic stops, Merry Christmas. With a non-emergency response time, no blue light and siren of six minutes, 38 seconds. So normally, ooh, I jumped quick. Normally you guys would like a full year in review. So here's the numbers for that. We had 37,901 law enforcement related activities. 26,073 security checks. We can tell you if you've left your Christmas lights up too long, if you've left the pumpkin on the front porch too long. We, we've been in your neighborhoods a lot. We did 6,654 traffic stops and throughout the entire 12 months, we were able to keep a response time of under seven minutes. And I'm very proud of that because that is, that is booking, even though we're not running blue light and siren, we're somehow figuring out how to navigate around this town. And if you only have to wait seven minutes and you're not in danger, imagine how fast we get to you when we do cut on our blue lights and sirens. Our newest member of the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department is Mackenzie R. Stark. She has started with us now. Forgive her attire. She had a rain day that day and we go to the rains, we all look homeless. Cause we're laying in mud and we're rolling around in the dirt and I kind of surprised her with the, you're getting a picture. She's a lifelong Cabarrus County resident. She was an intern with us for over a year. She has a degree from Pfeiffer University. We couldn't talk her into staying with us after internship. She decided to go to CNPD and chase the money and then she realized what a nightmare that can be. And about two years of the extreme calls, she called and said, can we come on back, come on back to the house? So I'm happy to have her. She'll be a very quick train. I expect for her to be by herself probably by mid February at the latest. And as Mallory talked about Martha Melvin, we were asked to do a speed study there when the stop sign was taken out. We left the signs out in stealth mode for the better part of three, three and a half weeks. Our average speed was only 27 miles per hour on that street. So we definitely do not have a speeding issue. Speed limit is 35. So folks there are putting along. We have had a rash of car break-ins. That's something I'd like to warn the citizens about. Make sure you're locking your cars. Make sure you don't leave valuables laying out for people to see. It never hurts to have your car parked somewhere that's brightly lit. We have made multiple arrests throughout this year and right before I did this, we made another one where we chased a subject into Charlotte Mecklenburg and was able to catch him. That was breaking into cars in Canterfield around that area. Another one we got, the bank robber I spoke about last council meeting, he is in custody. That night I wanted to tell you, we knew who he was within five hours of him committing the first bank robbery. Our detectives were flying through this. Then when he had a bank in Mecklenburg County, we were able to call them, give them the name along with their footage and their help. We were able to guarantee it was him and he was in custody the next morning by 9:00 AM. Any questions?
Got one point.
Let's have it.
And I, I mean, I don't expect you to wow me because I, we're not Charlotte. So when you give your, your end numbers, I don't know if you've collected or not, because I know the way you guys report, it's hard to separate. Is there a total amount of drugs that was seized this year? Do we have an understanding of that? Was it?
I would have to pull it. The vice narcotic numbers are down, but I would have to pull it because we do not separate it based on seizures like that. I can talk to our analysts to see if I can pull that up for you and get it to council. And see, but the hard part when it comes to drugs is, for example, let's say we have a person on autumn drop. They might be selling in the county, not selling either house, or they may bring a small amount in. A lot of times it's so intertwined, it's difficult to separate it. Cause we may have cases pending to where he's selling on Flow Store Road and the bulk of us there and has just one small, maybe an ounce case here in Harrisburg. But in reality, once we take that person and get him in custody, we're solving a much bigger problem for the county. So it's difficult for us to break those numbers down when they're so convoluted.
I did have a follow up question to that. I know we've had some problem areas QT being one and then potentially the Bojangles on Rocky River. Any insight there? Is it calming down? Is it still?
It has been calming down. Those numbers are down and I'll be happy to get them and I will send them over to the town manager to send out to you. But the numbers for 2023 are down when it comes to drug and vice narcotics arrests and investigations.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, guys?
Thank you, Captain Meesmer.
Thank you.
Third esteemed guest this evening is our chief.
I appreciate everybody.
Fire chief Dunn, that came just for you. You're all the good stuff.
Alrighty, Fire Department report for the month of December. So as usual, we have the Fire Marshal's Division and these are some of his activities or that division's activities last month. A couple of them, site plan reviewed at four, pre, pre-plans for commercial buildings, 10 of those. So relatively quiet month has been articulated earlier. As far as his activities, 63% were just general sites. You see, you did some plan review for buildings, outfit for shells and then some daycare inspections as well. As far as the stats, again, pretty low, low month, only 16 inspections and 10 of those were re-inspections. But total inspections for the year is 714. As far as our operations division and our responses, we responded to 261 incidents last month with an average response time of four minutes and 16 seconds. And you can see our total responses for last year, total incidents for last year was 2,933. So we, we as well will put together an annual report that'll, that'll show all of this plus our training statistics and, and things of that nature. Average response time again was down from the month of November. So that's always a good thing. As far as working fires, we actually had six in the month of December as you requested last month. Two of those were in the town of Harrisburg, two of those were in town of Midland. And two of them were in the city of Charlotte, along the area that we provide mutually. Again, Station 1 on Morehead Road continues to be the busiest with Station 2 and Station 3 following behind. Again, 70% of the time we took care of incidents on our own, only, or with only one unit. Again, incident count, again, Station 1 continues to be the busiest. You can see at times it may have been on the engine or the ladder depending on if the ladder was out of service. Again, incident type, most of our incidents are EMS, traffic related, things of that nature. As far as aid given or received, again, 76% of the time we, we took care of business ourselves. You can see that automatic aid given jumped up last month, but that can be attributed to what we just talked about earlier. The working fires that we assisted other agencies on. Again, the heat map, December the 5th or so was our busiest day of the month. Again, the heat map, December the fifth or so was our busiest day of the month. And again, station one's area, the highway forty-nine corridor, things, things in that area continue to be the busiest. Uh, this is a new, well, you saw this last month, but it was only half data. So this shows a whole, whole month of data in the month of December. The blue dots are one incident responses. The gray dots are more than one incident response where we went there more than once. Uh, and the red dots are where we went more than, uh, four times in a month. Typically, the red dots are folks who've just got, uh, older folks who just got released from the hospital. Uh, they have yet to find rehab care, things of that nature. Uh, and typically it's a, uh, husband and wife and either the husband or the wife can always, uh, help in situations that they get in. Uh, I think most months recently you've asked about our vacancies, so we've put together this slide that shows organizational chart of the whole organization. And then you can see at the bottom, we theoretically have two or three vacancies from current positions. Uh, but we went ahead and added the additional three that got approved in the last year's budget at halftime. Um, and we're in the process of hiring those, so, uh, three under our current system and then three additional with your approval last year's budget. And those are shown at the bottom in the firefighter positions. We had some, as came out in the staff newsletter today, we had some promotions last month. Captain Fox was promoted to battalion chief, engineer Eric Boss to captain, engineer Brian Ordés to captain. Firefighter two, Chris Carter, engineer and firefighter two, Michael Freeman, to engineer. So we're excited for them and I think they're excited. They, they've begun their, their duties, their new duties. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Chief Dunn, just speak for a moment. Um, my daughter had the opportunity to do a ride along the station runs, so thank you for that. We approached you around Thanksgiving. She surprised me with it and said, this was a part of her college studies and we get to team her up with Captain Meesmer at some point. She came back just kind of, oh, oh, wow, what an awesome experience moment. And she wanted to be here tonight and she said, you know, I appreciate Captain Johnson. And his team for making sure that I got the broad amount of exposure. She said, you know, the, the piece about that was they didn't come in and just put me here, there. They kind of sat me down and walked me through, wanted them to understand what my understanding was, what I wanted to find out. And then they tailored the day towards that. She had the opportunity to sit with some, um, the advanced EMT training, so that really helped in her studies as well. But she said, she said, overall, you know, there's kids that don't know where they need to be or what they want to do. And she would advocate for, for friends to come out and do a ride along in that, so she's appreciated of that. Captain Johnson, Eric Boss. Coy, I think.
Coy Lee.
Okay. And I'm sure probably a few other names, but, uh, thank you for that.
Well, they enjoyed her company as well. I think she gave it back to them as much as they gave it.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, uh, she, uh, she, she didn't win it, uh, or she didn't lose a card, so that was a good thing. She didn't have to do dinner or dishes. We enjoy having.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I don't have a question, but I just, uh, want to give kudos to the crew that came out to our church yesterday. Uh, we had a, a medical emergency and, uh, they responded very quickly and were very professional when they came in and, uh. EMTs in the fire department did a great job. He's been released from hospital today, so, uh, thank you guys so much for that.
Chief, um, also I got to see you guys run down highway forty-nine today in a brutal head-on collision down there, so I appreciate you on that. Um, any special preparations for tomorrow? I know we're going to have high winds, flooding, any extra duty or are you guys just kind of?
No, so we're, we're getting, getting prepared. Uh, as you know, we do do, uh, water rescues, so we're, we're checking off our boats and making sure all of that's good. Most people that have been in Harrisburg for a while know the areas that are prone to flooding, uh, Stallings Road, Farm Mill Road. With the rain and maybe Hickory Ridge Road. I think the concern tomorrow is more of the wind, the sustained wind. Uh, the rain that's already fallen, the ground soft and the additional rain that we'll get, I'm more worried about trees hitting power lines. Things of that nature. So power lines are down certainly. Stay away from the, treat all those, being live, even if you. If you're not sure it's a power line, treat it as a power line as well. So I think that's important takeaway for tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Dunn. A few things for mayor's comments. I did want to thank everyone that helped plan, attend and spoke at our fiftieth anniversary dinner that we had in December. It was really a lovely evening to kind of recap that fiftieth year and acknowledge our past and present community leadership that night. Um, this past Friday, I along with councilwoman Cotel and Glover and councilman Fall attended the newly elected breakfast that was hosted by Centralina Regional Council. It was a great morning. We were able to hear from US Senator Tom Tillis and then hear about the robust support and initiatives that Centralina. Is providing for our region and bonus, we got to meet many of the newly elected, um, officials in our area. So, um, with the new year comes our council board and committee assignments for the year. And so each January, we appoint a primary and alternate council member to the various town boards. The purpose of this is they serve as a liaison and point of contact during those regularly scheduled meetings. So thank you, council, for sending in your preferences. I did try to accommodate those as best as I could. Um, schedules do get a little bit crazy, so as always, if the primary and alternate assigned that I will read or unable to attend, please reach out to me and I will do my best to fill in. And I have this written down in case you don't catch all this, Dan. First up, we have our parks and recreation board. Our primary councilman is Chris Fall. Our alternate is Maurice Price. Our hatch board, which is our arts and cultural, our primary is Latriceia Glover and our alternate is Chris Fall. Youth council, primary will be myself, Mayor Teague, with the alternate, Alteen Cotel. Planning and zoning board, primary is Mike Thevenon and alternate is Rodney Dellinger. And our board of adjustments, primary is Alteen Cotel with the alternate Rodney Dellinger. So those will stay in place for the year twenty twenty-four. We will revisit and do this again in January of twenty twenty-five. Last step I have, um, a final appointment is to be made this evening is the selection of mayor pro temp. It's selected by town council by a majority vote of the council. And at this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations. We will need a motion and a second for any nominations. Some motion on the floor for Latriceia Glover to be mayor pro temp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Glover, welcome award. Maurice, want to thank you for serving as mayor pro temp. And with that, we will move into council comments. Don't everybody speak at once.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, apologize to the staff and council for the, uh, the extra invite. That went out this week or this past week, uh, for all the board, the budget sessions. Uh, my apologies for any extra work that may have come on anybody for that.
All those dates are locked down now since Mike has sent out the invites, so no changes, uh, just.
Ignore all those emails, please.
Appreciate the support on that, Mike, just getting everybody. Um, one thing that occurs to me just reading through this, I got a letter talking about the, uh, the hearing that was coming out. And I looked through some of those things like the left turn you can't make on Roberta Road and the food truck. Thing that's coming up, some of our restaurant owners may want to hear about that. I know. They're invited to these meetings and, and they're able to be here, but if there's anything we can do from a communication standpoint, maybe. Put it on the front of the webpage or this is coming up. When we were on the campaign trail, we, we certainly had, you know, why don't you tell us about it? We do, we do. We tell you about these things we invite. Uh, but these do have implications for those owners, whether you're a food truck owner, whether you're a restaurant owner. Uh, we'd like you to participate in the meeting, so anything we can do creatively to get that word out, I think would serve us well and. You know, relieve us of regret that comes on later.
So I have comments. Um, so I have to say that, you know, um, I think that us all being here, we value our town's. History and our collaboration and the mayor and I specifically share in common that we don't engage in foolishness and comments and stuff. Online, um, but also I think that we value that we are all connected to different parts of Harrisburg. And that we're here to work together and to collaborate and make sure that we're leveraging the voices of the different parts of Harrisburg. So I think that, um, I'm looking forward to the next four years and I don't know that you'll ever realize it, but we made history tonight, so. Cool, so thank you. Um, and please tomorrow, just make sure that you're safe and making good decisions and probably just stay home.
I know the kids are excited to have a day PMR.
Rob, I'll throw something your way. I only heard it through a great vine conversation, but you may check into it over on Caldwell Park Drive. So that, if you take that, it runs back into Charlotte. There are some overhouses, there's two overhouses there by the railroad tracks at forty-five. One of the overhouses caught fire and that's our conversation. Um, one of the church members, uh, back from Presbyterian was letting me know. That land has been sold, suppose we're going to be in Dallas. And I don't know if you've heard anything about that yet, uh, because it is Charlotte. But the plan is, is for them to come Caldwell, to Caldwell Park Drive. So I don't, I'm not seeing movement out there, rezoning signs.
We, we've been involved with three or four pitches out there for that, for that property at data center doesn't, doesn't ring a bell. Last one we were involved with was a, uh, a residential subdivision and generally if it needs a TIA. Then we get heavily involved, but we're involved passively no matter what goes out there because they. Have kind of an annexation and depending on utilities, they may need our utilities, things like that. Um, but yeah, I haven't. I haven't heard that yet, but I'll check with, with my folks. There may be, sometimes they get real preliminary and you guys hear about it before we even do.
They even discussed that even though there's subsection there, they're going to have to upgrade the power for the proposed data center that's talking about now, so. Just a heads up.
Appreciate.
And one final, this weekend there will be MLK celebrations for Cabarrus County. That'll be held Saturday. There'll be a parade and then, um, a small business showcase and other, um. Some of our students from Cabarrus County schools are going to showcase some of their work at the Laureate Center that starts at eleven. On Sunday at two o'clock, there is the dream lunch and then on Monday is the replaying ceremony that's eleven thirty.
I just wanted again to thank all our representatives for coming here and, um, not just making the presentation, but. You know, being able to allocate this kind of money to, um, our future Harrisburg YMCA. But I also really want to make sure that we recognize our mayor who has done a tremendous effort by. Going out there to Raleigh, making a case, making a presentation on what we have going on here in the. What, the why that we're trying to build and making sure that they know that, what we need. And I think that really went a long way in, uh, making sure that we were able to get the money that we are getting.
Any other council comments? Go on once. All right, we will move into public hearing. First, we will have Shelley is going to give us our presentation this evening on the UDO text amendments in council. I think there is a. Sheet that was printed and left at your seats that she's going to cover as well.
That's correct. Thank you, mayor and council members. This is a request to amend sections one forty point zero four point zero seven and one forty point zero four point zero eight. Of the town's unified development ordinance for the purpose of establishing and enhancing performance standards associated with mobile food vending. And other temporary uses. Staff's recommendation as well as the planning and zoning board's recommendation. Is to approve the text amendment and make the required, uh, statements of consistency. So for those that may be in the audience, uh, or tuned in to the Zoom meeting, I'd like to take a minute to talk about a text amendment. So a text amendment is a legislative act in which the town is or an applicant is proposing to amend its unified development ordinance. Now, the unified development ordinance, we refer to as the UDS. Houses all the town's, uh, regulations associated with land use and development within the jurisdiction. This document should consider, uh, should be considered a fluid document. It should change with our community. It could change because of new uses or changes in use types within our community. It can change because of technology advances. It could change. It could change due to even, uh, changes in the desires of the community. So there are various reasons that, uh, one of the staff and the council should always review its UDO. Uh, for potential updates. So one such change that has been noted in our community is the use and. Popularity of food trucks in our community. We have seen, uh, this use grow in two areas. As a temporary use, uh, on an existing site and also as a necessary use to an established business. A good example would be percent tab house. With any change in use or introduction of the use, there can be both concerns and opportunities associated with that use. Uh, with regard to the use of food trucks, there could be secondary negative impacts in the area of noise, parking, location. Visual impacts if left overnight and even fear of competition, uh, within shared centers. Opportunities can include, uh, food trucks are often utilized for incubation and growth of startup businesses. They can support a symbiotic relationship to a brick and mortar business again, such as. Uh, percent tab house in the town center area and also provides diversity of businesses within our community. So staff started evaluating our own regulations found in the UDO associated with food truck use. Uses as well as evaluated neighboring jurisdictions regulations. What we found is that our UDO had minimal performance standards and some sections lack clarity. For implementation. So staff evaluated, uh, our ordinance and brought back to the town council at its, uh, excuse me. August twenty twenty-three meeting, an overview of, uh, our regulations. And based on direction from the town council, we were asked to prepare a text amendment. Enhancing performance standards focusing on the right fit for our own community. So staff started the text amendment and found that there were other sections. Subsections within these chapters that could also be enhanced, uh, or even corrected in some cases. So staff, uh, prepared the draft text amendment and presented it to the town council at its September twenty twenty-three meeting. Again, we've received guidance from the town council at that meeting and was directed to proceed with the text amendment, working with the planning and zoning board. To fine tune the ordinance. Staff worked with the planning and zoning board in the month of October and November. And ultimately received a recommendation of support for the text amendment you are hearing this evening. So I'll start with the summary of the amendments in section one forty point zero four point zero seven. I'll start with portable onsite storage. This is allowed in our residential districts. They, um, are referring to such things as these portable pod units that for people moving in or out. It could be a similar unit used for remodeling, uh, of a residential unit or even an addition. So our current section actually, uh, needed some reworking, uh, formatting. So our current section actually uh, needed some reworking uh, formatting wise. So we could better implement that section. We also enhance performance standards in the area of maximum size. We fine tune the placement location on the site. Uh, we originally proposed a temporary use permit be required for this type of use because there was a maximum timeframe that these type of units were permitted on the property. But there was no permit required. So how do you enforce something and start that clock if you don't require permitting? We worked with the planning and zoning board at this meeting, uh, excuse me, at the October meeting and they recommended that we give a fourteen day grace period prior to permitting because sometimes it's difficult to get information out to homeowners moving in or once leaving that even a permit is required. So uh, we have written into this section a fourteen day grace period. If a portable onsite storage unit is planned to be onsite longer than that, they would need a temporary use permit. There is a maximum uh, number of days that this use could be on a residential property. That is ninety days. Again, the planning and zoning board asked us to incorporate a time extension feature. So in the event a property owner, something gets delayed in their move or their move in, there's still the ability to um, allow this unit with a uh, approved time extension. Uh, we also made sure that there is an exception uh, if a storage unit uh, is tied to a valid building permit. Sometimes it's not simply someone just moving in. It could be a larger construction project that would take longer than ninety days. Um, and sometimes even six months if it's a brand new single family home and they put one of these units on the site. If there's a valid uh, building permit, an active permit, it would be exempt from this section. The next section, food truck courts. Uh, what's interesting is this has been in the ordinance since it was revised in twenty twenty one. Uh, this subsection is proposed to be removed in its entirety from this section of the U D O. And first of all, I wanted to share the definition of a food truck, uh, food court. Food truck court, excuse me, is a semi-improved area that allows two or more food trucks to operate in a fixed location. Currently, our ordinance allows this by right. We have not issued any permits for such, but it's currently allowed by right. So listening to the council and its desire to regulate food trucks, we are proposing to remove this uh, from this section as a by right use. Take the ability for possibly something like this to occur more than one truck on one site and put it in the temporary use by special use permit only. So I will go into details in a few minutes uh, about what that would look like. With regard to the amendments in section one forty point zero four point zero eight, this is the temporary use section of the U D O. Uh, the summary table found in this first section uh, is proposed to be amended. Portions of it actually need to be corrected. There were the wrong cross references within this table. Uh, other modifications included some of the proposed amendments that you will hear later on regarding food trucks. We also modified the requirement that a contractor's office only be allowed on a construction site by special use permit. It should be by temporary use permit. Most major construction sites that would utilize this type of contractor's office has already gone through possibly a rezone, construction plan review, plating and so forth. So to require them to go get a special use permit is really excessive. We also looked at the section related to sidewalk vendors. Again, we reviewed past permitting and reviewed this section of the U D O. So currently, we allow the ability to sell food, beverages or merchandise from a stand within the general commercial zoning district on a public sidewalk as a temporary use. It does not have to be affiliated with a onsite business or adjacent business. Uh, we have not permitted anything like this nor uh, I'm unclear that we would want to uh, because the visual impacts. The visual impacts uh, could be uh, not the vision we want for our community. So we are proposing to remove this ability unless it's uh, tied to a special event such as within the town center area, if someone's having a special event closing down streets and we want vendors on the street. Uh, both adjacent businesses or other businesses from the outside, we still have that ability. So now for the focus of this amendment, uh, I'll review the food truck uh, section of this text amendment. So we first started by establishing a clear definition for food truck. And we developed this based on definitions from other permitting and licensing agencies, uh, as well as uh, evaluating other ordinances. And what we found is the definition of food trucks and mobile food vending is often used interchangeably. So we provided a definition for both referring back to each other. We then focused on enhancing the performance standards. And again, this does not affect the town's own food truck events in our parks or anything like this. This is for a temporary use proposed to come in within uh, the town. So we establish hours of operation from eight AM to ten PM. We clarified there's no overnight storage. Uh, we um, stated that compliance with local county and state regulations, including sales tax regulations is required. Uh, you can actually find a lot of information on uh, the internet. Uh, I have an example on the screen uh, where there's really five basic permits or licenses that are required for food trucks. And they go through quite a bit from the health department to estate permit where they have to show their certificate of insurance. Uh, they get inspected, even the food handlers uh, within the food trucks are supposed to be permitted. So there is quite a bit they go through. Uh, compliance with the noise ordinance, proper disposal of fats, oils, grease and wastewater. Uh, some ordinances make sure that they prohibit any dumping within the sanitary sewer, the town sewer system. Um, also, uh, this came from the planning and zoning uh, board. It was recommended to be added by our sustainability representatives that we encourage the use of renewable alternative energy sources. Uh, there are such things as uh, solar generators and so forth that uh, food trucks can utilize. Now, something new that has been added is a separation requirement. Uh, we mentioned earlier that potential impacts can be noise, parking, location and even fear of competition. So I provided an illustration to your right of how the separation requirement may work in a multi-tenant center. This happens to be the Lowe's food shopping center. And again, this is just for illustrative purposes. So each red line indicates the front door of a business and a hundred foot separation distance. So if you measure that in a center like this, the only place a food truck could be placed would be in the center of this particular development. So again, uh, if you have say restaurants on one end and offices on one, uh, the other side, the offices may want the food truck, but the um, the restaurants may not want a food truck that close. So um, it gives everybody an equal application or right to, to be heard and have that separation requirement. Now, something while preparing this, I realized that there was something left out in that requirement. And I've handed it out at your location. Um, this section of the draft ordinance should read a minimum separation of one hundred feet from the front door of an existing business or restaurant not affiliated with the mobile food service shall be required unless consent is provided at the time of permitting. So there could be two businesses located next to each other that they don't mind that the food trucks there. There could be different hours of operation. It could even be a joint celebration. So we did not mean to write this draft as an absolute regarding that uh, one hundred foot separation. So we are proposing that if the amendment uh, is to be approved, that that section be incorporated in the draft. Uh, we originally proposed that food trucks be prohibited on vacant property. We were concerned about potential visual impacts and public health and safety. Well, the planning and zoning board challenged us on that and it was great feedback. So they said, well, what if it's in an area like even the town center? We have vacant properties that have plenty of parking, good circulation around it. If food trucks were to set up uh, on the vacant property, not impact other businesses um, and health and safety, good access, pedestrian uh, pedestrian circulation was an impact. Uh, why not consider it in areas in which we want to encourage activities such as the town center? So we went back and amended our draft to include the opportunity for this by special use permit. So it would not be allowed by just a straight temporary use permit. They would have to go through this special use permit process. Uh, we also thought about uh, some of the neighborhoods often uh, have food truck events at the community centers and so forth. So we did write an exemption in the draft amendment as well. Other new requirements associated with food trucks fall under the heading of duration and frequency. Currently, the U D O allows a food truck to operate every day on any parcel in the commercial district. So it could be three hundred sixty five days. Uh, food truck could be on a property by temporary use permit and that would be permissible today. What we're proposing is the duration be a maximum of three consecutive days on the same site and a frequency of a thirty day break in between temporary use permits on the same site. It doesn't go by the user, it goes by the site. So if on this site, there was a permit issued for three days, another food truck could not come on the same site until after a thirty day period is passed. So we went from three sixty five to maybe thirty three to thirty six uh, days of a year. So that is a, a real restriction on temporary uses. We also tried to clarify uh, the use of public property. This draft specifically prohibits unless authorized by the town. And we tried to define that, that would apply to public streets, rights of way, public sidewalks, public parking lots and plazas. So we had a lot of good uh, test questions and we wanted to illustrate how food trucks might operate in an area. So since the town center is such a compact design, I'm utilizing uh, the town center area uh, for illustrative purposes. So this is a aerial photograph of Main Street to the far left uh, upper left corner. That is Roberta Road, Main Street intersection. And you can see Town Hall to the right uh, of the photograph. So I tried to apply the proposed regulations as it would relate with the separation requirements uh, on first Main Street. So to make that one hundred foot separation requirement, there's really only two sections of this area of Main Street in which a food truck could possibly be located. Even with that possibility, it's only if the town is willing to authorize a permit for a um, for a food truck to be located within the public right of way. So if council felt that they do not want any uh, food trucks on Main Street unless this is a uh, special event that's being held, you can just provide guidance to staff in. A permit would never be issued on the right of way. Uh, this ordinance was written to encourage food trucks to actually be located on private property, recognizing that in some cases that is difficult to do. So there's still the option possibly on a public right of way, but again, in any case, the separation requirement uh, comes into play. So we have the two star areas if we're looking specifically at Main Street. The other little trailers that you see around in this photograph, I wanted to show where food trucks could locate on private property that would meet the one hundred foot separation requirement. So for example, Venture Church, they have plenty of parking in the back. They could place their food truck in various locations. Uh, again, it's only permitted as a temporary use for three consecutive days. A thirty day period in between. In the case of Venture Church, uh, if for some reason they were having a festival in the back and they asked to put the food truck actually uh, within the public right of way, they still are far enough away from other front doors, other businesses where they could possibly still put it in the right of way. But again, it's one food truck per site, maximum three consecutive days with the thirty days in between.
So can I go ahead and ask the question now while you're right there?
Sure.
So if I look at every one of those little tables, at any given time, I could have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
No, 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 that is not the intent. I was just showing some locations. Yes, yes, no, I, that's great. And I'll expand on that. So I was trying to show all the little trailers show that meets the hundred foot distance from front doors. Each side is only possibly allowed one food truck. That's per temporary use permit, per site, within a thirty day period now can. So I'm gonna take Atrium Health. I've, I'm showing two food trucks there. If they were having a food truck, only one food truck could go there for three consecutive days within a thirty day period. The same would apply to Venture Church. So you could have one there and one at Atrium Health. They would have to apply for the permit. It would have to, you know, if they're operating in the same time, it would just have to be one of those unique situations where they happen to pick the same day for a special, you know, for an event.
It could possibly.
It could, it could. Yes, you are very correct in that. So, but all these little units weren't intended to say you could have three at one site. This, uh, yeah. But, but you could.
In one given day.
Yes, you could. Now, that is probably highly unlikely.
Right.
Food trucks, uh, we've only permitted about uh, five or six food trucks in the past, say, five years. The only um, food truck that operates on a consistent basis is the one tied to percent which is more of a unique case. So it's very rare you will ever see food trucks in the same area just happen to be operating on the same day unless there's like a big event going on in the downtown area. Uh, so I did want to make that clarification, but great question. So we've talked about the three day consecutive day uh, duration with thirty days in between. But I also mentioned that we wrote flexibility in the draft uh, to accommodate these unique business models like percent tap or even uh, the tractor supply would like to have a food truck maybe um, twice a month instead of once every thirty days. So we wrote flexibility where a property owner and business owner can request a special use permit that has to be approved by the Board of Adjustment to consider any increase in consecutive days. Uh, any increase in the time between or short of time between temporary use permits on site. So I want to do it twice a month. So percent tap wants to do it every weekend. They may only want to do it two consecutive days or three consecutive days, which would be in the They may only want to do it two consecutive days or three consecutive days, which would be in the ordinance, but I want to do it every weekend. Um they would apply for a special use permit if they want to have more than one food vendor, one food truck at a site. Again, they have that possibility by special use permit. Um I mentioned earlier that the planning zoning board asked that we write in flexibility for the possibility of food trucks on vacant property. Uh that too could be considered by special use permit. Uh we did write in the draft that some of the findings, the focus area of the Board of Adjustment should be in the areas of public safety, access, location. Is it a town activity center which we want to enhance the excitement in that area? Um somebody proposing something like that on a vacant property on forty-nine probably wouldn't get approved if that's not a activity center that we would like to uh encourage. So uh for those in the audience or that may be listening, I'd like to take a minute to talk about a special use permit. So I mentioned earlier that special use permit requires to be approved by the Board of Adjustment. This type of application would be heard in a public hearing at the Board of Adjustment. It requires a seminal review of a site plan. Um it also requires adjacent property owner notification. So we could have uh other businesses or property owners in the area uh have an opportunity to review the application and comment if they think they're going to be impacted. There are required findings to be made for an approval of the special use permit. And what's most important on a special use permit is there, there is the ability to set conditions of approval. So if, for example, we want to allow for um a more frequent uh food truck, more on a uh a consistent basis, but we're concerned about potential impacts to other businesses or adjacent residential properties, we could even condition that to require uh annual permitting. So the board could review it on an annual basis and consider its renewal. So there's a a lot of flexibility in the uh conditions that can be set for a special use permit. So I've talked a lot about the temporary use and then I've talked now about if there's that unique business model, uh they can apply for a special use permit. So I wanted to show you some, what I thought, there's some pretty good examples of this symbiotic relationship between a brick and mortar uh operation and a temporary use such as a food truck. So the upper left corner is an example of a new construction of a brewery in South Charlotte off of Carmel Road. It's called Open Tap. They actually designed their building to accommodate the food truck because it's part of their um business model. If you look at the picture in the middle, you can see the food truck is backed in under the cover. So they've actually designed their building to have this temporary use on a consistent uh uh operation supporting their business. The lower left example is actually of a restaurant that also wanted a uh accessory use of a food truck. So this is Belmont uh Main Street. This is Old Stone Steakhouse. It's fine dining for uh steak. So it has that fine dining section, but they also want to expand their business model to incorporate a more casual dining experience. This happens to be right adjacent to the park where they have summer concerts and so forth. So you can see a food truck at the back of their outdoor patio where it actually opens up into their outdoor patio. And this stays on their site because they prep all their food in their commercial kitchen. But then it offers their business model as they have casual dining and fine dining. Uh and that business is quite successful. Couple other examples, uh you can see the Noda Brewery. Um again, more breweries are ensuring that their site design includes an area for this food truck to um provide this uh symbiotic relationship in in their business model. On the upper right happens just to be another brewery where parallel parking was used uh to uh house the food truck on a regular basis. Again, this is an example of how somebody would apply for special use permit to accommodate this type of business model. So overall, there's a lot of information here. Uh this ordinance is actually very, written very restrictive. Um however, we try to allow some flexibility in this draft uh for those unique business models or situations we may come across. And that would be by special use permit again, to allow for uh more frequency, consider location, the number of trucks. A special use permit is an alternative and written into this draft. Uh this amendment does not affect some of our other temporary uses. I know we were asked in the past, but what about some of our uh vendors, uh Christmas tree lots and so forth? This does not affect their operations whatsoever. It does not affect commercial outdoor sales events for brick and mortar businesses as well. So we didn't touch that section of the um the ordinance. Uh so I'm coming near to the end to closing. So I wanted to just provide a summary chart of current regulations and amended uh proposed amendments. So with regard to consecutive days, right now, a food truck could be on a private property every day for three hundred sixty-five days for the entire year. We are proposing an amendment to only allow an event to be three consecutive days. In addition to that, there is a zero waiting period between permits on any individual site. We are putting into place a thirty day uh temporary use uh frequency. And again, the asterix on on this uh within this table represents the ability to apply for a special use permit. Uh separation from other businesses currently, we have no requirements for separation from other businesses or restaurants. We are proposing a one hundred foot separation requirement. And again, that's unless the adjacent business is provides consent that they're okay with um not having this full one hundred feet. With regard to allowing food trucks in public right of ways, the current ordinance requires town permission and that is being maintained uh within the amendment with regard to location. A private property needs permission from the property owner. That does not change at all. With regard to hours of operation, uh there was none really specified. We uh identified a eight AM to ten PM requirement. So I shared earlier that the planning board heard this item in October and in November. It was at their November meeting that the planning board made a recommendation for town council to approve the amendment and made these uh required findings that the amendment is consistent with section one forty-five zero one zero seven and one forty-five zero three zero one of the Unified Development Ordinance as well as the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan. And that's because they felt that the text amendment establishes and or enhances performance standards associated with mobile food vending and other temporary uses found within these sections to reflect our community's vision for quality and reduce the potential for adverse impacts. They felt the text amendment also promotes goals of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan in the area of fostering economic development by supporting incubation and growth of startup businesses. Uh it encourages a mixture of land uses in our community and establishes performance standards to protect the community's vision. So with all of that, we recommend that the council hold the public hearing for this tax amendment, consider a motion to approve uh the amendment of sections one forty point zero four, put seven, and one forty point zero four point zero eight of the U D O proposing to establish and enhance regulations associated with the food trucks and other temporary uses as proposed to be amended within that section that it provided at your seats and adopt the consistency statements as read into the record. Of course, with any legislative action by the council, you can make the decision this evening or post postpone it to a future meeting. So with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Shelley, I know that you mentioned there had only been five or six other vendors that had requested a permit. Um how many days are they were requested permit for and are those food trucks owned by Harrisburg residents?
I cannot answer the question if they're owned by Harrisburg residents. Um there's only one recent permit that actually, uh one recent permit in which they wanted it on a more consistent and frequent basis. And because our ordinance um had some quirks to it, they actually moved down the road to the Charlotte area. Um the only business that I'm aware of that wanted to do maybe more is the permitted percent tab house. Uh we, we have not reached uh the state in which we are seeing a flood of food trucks. We're not Charlotte or some of these other larger communities. Uh we are limited breweries and that's usually where they follow the breweries because it's a great partnership. Um so we're just not quite there yet, but we are trying to prepare regulations that will still help protect uh the community as well as adjacent businesses.
I think it was asked in the past, but what's the enforcement on this? Somebody call the cops and say trucks out there? What do we do?
No, we have our own code enforcement officer. So we have had, although not, I only, I indicated, we only have like five or six permits we've issued. We've had a couple of occasions where somebody's reported a food truck at a particular center. We look in our records, they don't have a permit. Our code enforcement officer goes out, talks to the property owner, the business owner, the truck operator. Uh if they need a permit, we tell them how to come in and get the permit. Sometimes they just move on. But we do inform the property owner um of what the rules are. So if they do invite a food truck in the future, they know a permit's required, where to get it and who to call for additional information.
So one thing I don't want to see, um and I don't know what the state standards are, is that a brewery uses a food truck to meet their requirements to serve food. Um we know supposedly that you can only have this permit at this site if it's a brewery for three consecutive days.
Unless they apply for a special.
So it could go before the Board of Adjustment and the Board of Adjustment says, I'm gonna give you a permit for thirty days. The Board of Adjustment could do that.
Yes, well, so the Board of Adjustment, eh the intent of a special use permit is for those unique business models. So first of all, I'm not sure and I'll double check on that. I think breweries fall under a separate category where they don't have to have a restaurant component.
Okay, I don't know what the state is.
So I I believe, it used to be, yes, yes, yes. There there used to be requirements for places that serve alcohol, tried to prevent the straight bars to sell a certain percentage of food. I do not believe that's the case in state law, the ABC rules anymore. Um so again, most breweries, although they may be open seven days a week, may only have a food truck there during peak hours over the weekend. So I don't believe they're necessarily using it to supplement to try to meet that state code. But the temporary use permit is intended for those unique business models such as percent tap that wants to have a food truck for its patrons um say three days a week, but every week. So it's more than that thirty day separation. So they'd need that special use permit. They also have their truck in the public right of way. And they would need support from some of the other businesses around them to get support for that truck at their current location because some of the other businesses in their building are within that one hundred foot separation requirement. So the, the special use permit provides the opportunity for them to have that unique business model to present a site plan showing how it will operate to provide proof if they do have support from an adjacent business owner that may be within that one hundred foot separation and operate the way they would like it to support their business. Um there are required findings again that the Board of Adjustment has to make that there's no uh problem with public health and safety, uh good access, circulation. That is sort of a unique case there. Typically, you wouldn't want the food truck on the other side of the public right of way uh because you have the potential for somebody with a beer to walk across the street over in the other area. Not that that's occurring, I'm just saying the potential. So it really gives the ability for the town to consider these unique situations um and make sure that it fits within the community and there aren't any secondary impacts. If, if, for example, um I'm gonna say if percent tap is going through the special use permit process, they wouldn't be asking just for thirty days. They'd probably say, this is my business model. I want to be able to do this on an ongoing basis without a sunset. What I shared is the, the Board of Adjustment has the ability, if they're unsure about the site plan or potential impacts, they could say, well, we want you to come back in a year so we can evaluate the success of this site design and um reevaluate it.
Their, their business model is not based on that food truck. So the argument that you proposed, they operate with a regular license. The only reason the food trucks are there were at the request of the uh patrons. So folks still go to Hawthorne's, they still go to Unica, they still go and bring their food over to percent. Percent was gonna open no matter what.
Right.
And they're operating as a brewery because they do brew their own beer, but they're not reliant on that. It's only a modification to, for their customer uh ease of access.
And Council, I think it's important to to note too that I, I think, you know, there's a lot of input that went into, you know, drafting all of the revisions that we did here. And they, the revisions are designed to be, to have maximum flexibility so that you have a lot of input from your staff, from business owners and from the public if it's gonna be a permanent situation. You basically got three days a month. That's the most you can get. If it's gonna be more than that, need to go to the Board of Adjustment. That's a public hearing. That's, that's like a meeting we have tonight. Um you have a staff uh report on that. You're gonna have conditions that staff's recommending. The board can come up with additional recommendations. The public can ask for additional conditions in that setting and those members are appointed by, by you. Um so again, the, the effort, cost, time that goes into that, there aren't very many businesses that would go for a special use. I do think somebody like percent or uh breweries, this is their wheelhouse for, for supplementing what they do on a weekend or on holidays. Um but that, that's really the extent that we see this now, you know, five years down the road. That this is something we gotta continue to look at and evolve, but it gives staff, you know, maximum flexibility to be able to adjust to the specific circumstance, but it isn't something um that we have an abundance of right now. This is really a cleanup for those transient food truck, we really aren't even trucks, they're not mobile. They're dropping a trailer in a gravel parking lot and we don't have any say over what they do. So this takes care of that without, without affecting the other vendors that we know are used regularly.
So how far in advance does a permit need to be requested?
There's no minimum time in advance. There's no minimum time in advance for a permit. It's, it's something that's an administrative permit over the counter. Of course, they have to apply and get approval. Usually takes a day or two, possibly depending on where it is to be evaluated and issued. So would have to apply for, before they park their truck.
Are there any other council comments? We will open it up for public hearing, but wanted to have you guys ask questions first before we did that. Thank you, Shelley. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the U D O text amendment as presented with food trucks and other temporary uses. We did have a sign up out front and no one signed up. However, I will check, is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on this before we move to those on Zoom? State your name and address for the record. All over again.
My name is Brian Ichberia, 3940 Ballmore Avenue. My wife and I own a beauty of a food trailer. It's actually 16 footer. You know, it's, it's great. And I just want to understand that this sounded, it, it had the sound of being really cumbersome. My question is, I mean, so are we really saying that privately owned legitimate businesses on their own property need government permission to allow another properly licensed business to be on their own property? Because that, I mean, I think what we really want is smaller government. And this is like, this is a lot. So if I have a, if I have a lot, I can only have a food truck there three days and then I have to wait an entire month. I mean, it just sounds a lot like permission asking. It's kind of what we want to get away from, I think. It sounds a lot like Charlotte, you know, just a big bureaucracy. And I get it, there were provisions put in. It seems like there was consideration given so there could be flexibility, but the problem's not the flexibility. The problem is the need for permission for legitimate, properly licensed private businesses in a free market. If, if the people don't want the truck there, they won't purchase the food. And the person with the truck or the trailer won't come back because there is no market for them. The, the Harrisburg residents obviously don't approve or desire their services. Instead, it, it sounds like I'm going to have to go through a middleman. It just sounds really big, you know, that we have to employ a, a cold person now to go out and, and speak to them. What is the, what is the fee if they stay five days? I think Councilman Fall asks, if they stay five days, what is it? $50 a day, $1,000 a day? You know, what is it going to be? Because it sounds, it just sounds like a lot. So I think I need a little more clarity as a business owner. Thank you.
So the short answer is yes. It's, you'll need a permit. And you need a permit to do a, or to not really do, what should I say here? The zoning really regulates it. So you need permission or a permit to conduct a use that already isn't permitted on there. So there's the only way to regulate that is to go through that same process of zoning permits. Figuring out if the public wants that type of use. And, and that's very consistent with what we do in general. And, and I can certainly appreciate the, the free market approach to it. But if we took that same approach to, let's say, our other zoning issues of single family homes or multifamily homes. Certainly there's enough market to, to go as high as we want and as small as we want on apartments in town. But I don't think the board or the community would necessarily say, well, the market wants that for Harrisburg. So Harrisburg wants it for Harrisburg. So zoning really addresses that issue of what is the community that exists want versus the community that could exist want? And how do you balance that? And it's, it's not an easy balance for sure. So that's where those public hearings come in.
Certainly, because you know, the schools, which we have the opportunity to take our trailer to schools. I mean, they have food trucks at almost every football game and outside of basketball games, but I didn't hear that mentioned. If there's a special provision there for that, because that would impact a lot of people and something that the school desires. Obviously, they, they invite these food trucks. So just wanted a little more clarity.
So Brian, when, when this came up, one of the first things the council said at the time was we did not want to impact existing businesses today. And we've heard percent's name going around tonight. What we had where there were some instances where a food truck showed up on 49. And it was, I'm sure it was the scariest looking food truck I've ever seen. And there was that one and then there was another one that showed up at Tractor Supply. And then there was also a, a stock one of the park. There's another guy that drops into Stallings Park who has a white Ford van with stickers of ice cream and he has a bell. And he says he's selling ice cream and I get phone calls, I promise you, no lie about somebody sketching at Stallings Park, can I buy ice cream? And I'm like, what the heck is going on? And then we had revised at Tractor Supply.
Yeah.
It was, it was all over the place. And you referenced, do we want Charlotte? One of the things I know when, when I saw some of the stuff is I don't like driving up 49 and seeing all the sprawl. And we work so hard, we, we put out grants and incentives for these businesses to improve their fronts on 49. We tried some kind of beautification program in 49. We're still working on that. So it seemed counterproductive if we were as a council to say, yeah, it comes up, your food truck anywhere. It was more trying to regulate the craziness that was just people. They had no interest in it. We're just like a good market, therefore they're dropping their trailer and setting up.
I can see that problem definitely.
Shelley, can you address the school question for us?
Yes, school, food trucks at schools, they regulate their own sites and they are exempt from the permitting requirement. That is correct.
Same with neighborhoods, HOAs, community events, parks. Almost all of the traditional places that you see vendors are exempt under. This really is targeted at, you know, those one offs that Councilman Dellinger has, has mentioned. That Councilman Smith has mentioned where you don't really know, you know, this, this vendor and, and they're kind of just dropping anchor on some, some lot, may or may or may not have permission to be on the lot. But we don't anticipate this be, being discouraging towards business at all. And in the process is super, this is a one page application. This is not anything that's cumbersome whatsoever.
Excellent. Thank you for the.
Did that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, good, good. Brent, did you want to come up as well? Just name and address for the record.
Brent, Witchell 5445 Somerset Lane in Harrisburg. So Ron did a good job, I think, of answering my first question, which was, are we solving a problem or are we just trying to get in front of something? So the food trucks that I've experienced, I've enjoyed thoroughly because they enhance my experience when I do go to percent or wherever. If I go to Farmville, I don't know if they are still doing that. But now that you've explained that, the next question I had is what is the feedback? Have we got any feedback from the existing food trucks? Like, is this a big burden or they, do they feel like now they're going to have to not come to Harrisburg? Or is it something that is streamlined enough where they're like, okay, we'll go through that paperwork and then we're good to go? Thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
Feedback that we've gotten has been positive. The, the current system, we've kind of shoehorned in to make it work because it actually requires a daily permit. Your, your permit's only good for one day. So you want to do this for three days? Well, that's three permit fees, fill it out three times. So we've been using some, some pretty aggressive administrative liberties to, to make it work. And, and we feel like this streamlines it and makes it a lot easier and more predictable.
I also think it's important to note too, that as Shelley pointed out, it's a fluid document. And, and this is a very active council that if we start hearing this isn't working or this is really becoming a concern. It's certainly something that we can revisit and, and address as well. Are there any other folks in person that would like to speak? No, you can, it's, you can speak during public hearing, just come up and state your name and address for the record.
Larry Pittman, 250 Roberta Road, Southwest and Concord. I know, having served 11 years and two months in the state legislature, a lot of times stuff sounds different than what's intended. So I'm going to give you some leeway on that. But it does sound pretty over buried and complicated. And as a average taxpaying citizen, which is all I've ever been, even when I was in the legislature. I keep hearing the word permit, 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 permit. To me, that sounds like money, 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 you know? And I ain't thrilled with that. But the one thing I would point out, and I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but my gut reaction to say you have a vacant lot and y'all can keep them from doing it on that vacant lot. I figure a vacant lot belongs to somebody. And as long as that owner is fine with it, it's nobody else's business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Is there anyone else in person before we get to those joining us via Zoom?
I just have a question. You keep talking about commercial property. Okay, let's say I'm at the Lions Club down here. I don't know if you consider that commercial property or not, but if I want to have a couple of food trucks down there, do you, are you telling me I've got to come and get a permit? Is that a yes or a no?
That would be a yes for an institutional use. Unless you're having a special event, again, this is where.
Again, if it's a nonprofit, that's a nonprofit. So you're telling me all nonprofits, if they're going to use food trucks, they got to get a permit? Yes or no?
Yes, based on how the draft is. It does, it exempts schools and town events. But if you were having a food truck event, you would have a special use permit, or excuse me, a special event permit for whatever you're having on your site.
Notice also you had a word up there called religious and how does that affect that?
Well, what that was focused on was there are some temporary uses that are religious based, such as revivals and, and so forth. I just wanted to make clear that it doesn't affect some of those other temporary uses.
Well, some of those organizations have something like festivals, you know, like for Halloween. They don't call it Halloween, they have festivals. Does that impact those?
Again, if they pull a special event permit at the church facility, it can include the food trucks in whatever special event that they're having.
In other words, if they're having bounties and what have you, they have to have a permit for that?
Well, they typically don't. It's anything you're drawing to the major public with. And again, if the council chose to, we could exempt religious institutions as well and nonprofit sites from permitting.
Well, I would think that that would be something that would be very important is the nonprofits not having to. And so another thing you didn't mention, you didn't mention price of these permits.
A temporary use permit that would be for three consecutive days is $75. That's the current price. And it's not proposed to change.
And so how many special use permits you issue?
So, so again, there's a difference between a special use permit. If some, somebody wants to have a more frequent and a permanent type of, of food trucks on their site. That is a, a special use permit that runs 250, that goes to the board of adjustment, public hearing. But that runs with the land, that's a one time. If somebody's coming in for a temporary use permit on a particular site, three day consecutive.
Do we know how many temporary use permits that we issued in the calendar year 2023? Let me ask that.
Yeah, we've only issued maybe three, two to three permits in a calendar year.
So that the answer's two to three.
I'm sorry.
The answer's two to three. You, you were asking about the type of permit. And rather than be conversational, because we do have a, a board meeting to, to finish up here. I wanted to get your, your question in there, so I didn't mean to.
I think there needs to be a lot more input to it. I agree with the guy ahead of me, you know, maybe a little, I agree, you need the regulation, but it may be a little bit.
And it might be, and that's how, you know, we could, we have a current ordinance now.
Yeah, I think that's what we were asking, what, what was it before with?
$100 a day.
And what was it before for like nonprofits that were?
$100 a day. So in, in our ordinances are, are an evolution, right? We did an entire unified development ordinance revision two years ago. And these are improvements upon that. And there will be other ones next month that we improve. And as you, as you find the flaws in them, you tweak them to, to make them a little better. It might be a flaw here where, you know, you get a Lions Club or you get a, a church event. And it's like, is this really, was this the intent of it? Now let's go back and tweak it a little bit. But as the community grows, as things change, our ordinances change. But yeah, those are all valid points.
So while in, into what Rob was talking about. Gaddis Brothers came in about two, three years ago. And they questioned one of our things in our U D O. They had to pull a permit to put in a cement pad for an air conditioner. The permit costs more than the cement did. And we're like, well, that's stupid, right? So we, we made an adjustment, we learned from it. The challenge that you're presenting, I don't know if it's ever happened, but at the same time, I think we also discussed neighborhood HOAs would be exempt from this. Because they would bring, you know, they bring in an ice cream truck, what have you. So while it may sound over overreaching, some of the things are proposed scenarios, we've not seen come up before. That was one of the reasons we've asked about. So we didn't want to disrupt. All we were trying to do is focus on just making sure that our efforts on trying to beautify and keep the town in a, going in one direction right now was consistent more than anything else.
And, and it may be lost on, on certainly the newly elected members and, and people in the audience. We, we've been talking about this for about six months. So there's a lot that, that, you know, we've done that, you know, we may be glossing over. Let's keep in mind too, that this is a passive ordinance. You know, somebody had mentioned, you know, earlier about who, you know, enforcement, who enforces it. We're not, we're not going around, driving around, looking for, for food trucks. We don't have a person that does that. This is one of those complaint driven things, just like some of our other, you know, be a good neighbor ordinances out there that if somebody doesn't pull a per- permit and their neighbors don't complain and the community doesn't complain, we don't have somebody driving around looking. It's, this is, you know, when people disagree, what do we do? We fall back to the ordinance. We look and say, okay, you do need a permit, you don't need a permit. Here, here are the rules and regulations for that, but certainly not looking to expand an enforcement division that drives around looking for ice cream men and, and, and the regular mobile food vendors. Just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we've had multiple presentations and Shelley, I know you guys have put a lot of work. In one of the presentations, we saw how our current ordinance stacks against ordinances of towns around us. And just to reiterate, it's not that we're going from nothing to this. Like we currently have something in place, it's just not that good. Like it doesn't have the hours, for example, like they can be what in the middle of the night? But then it also helps because right now you have to get a permit every day. Well, here you will just get one and it will be cheaper and it will be good for three days. So I mean, it seems that it's an improvement of what we have in place now. And then again, it's a living document that we can adjust if we're hearing complaints, if we're having people come in here and you know, express them like Mayor mentioned, we're a very active board and we're always ready to jump in and help with the situation.
And please keep in mind, I, I've served with these people for two years and a lot of the, the, a lot of the monologue you hear sounds like government overreach or government visual. And I can assure you that it's probably the last thing that you'll find behind, behind this bench. There's, there's a big difference between driving down 49 in Harrisburg and driving down Sharon Amity in Charlotte. You know, they drop food trucks everywhere and some of them smell good and and some of them attract people who are actual foodies and some of them attract the other type of people that Captain Meesmer deals with. So I mean, keep in mind that we're the same people sitting here that are sitting out there. When I walk out the door, you know, I, when I drive down 49, I want a certain visual. So it's not, I don't think there's any, I don't even, the only government person probably up here is Rob.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Brian, I don't mean to cut you off. Can you come up? Because the, the camera is actually. Brian, I don't mean to cut you off. Can you come up? Because the the camera is actually in front of you so that people at home can see.
So as the owner of a trailer, thank you for allowing me to to speak again. As the owner of a trailer, I understand exactly what you mean. We put a lot of money into our trailer. Some people don't. Right? And I would just like to make the suggestion as an owner, I would be glad. To subject my trailer to an inspection that's good for a year as opposed to asking permission to transact. One day at a time or one weekend at a time. So just, I want to throw that out there because I do understand you're addressing a problem. And it would be just, just great to consider that, please. Thank you.
And something else you guys may want to kind of mull through. There's a gentleman somewhere over off Patricia, I think, that likes to rev cars. He works on cars at seven A M. I've gotten a few phone calls. What can we do? Well, there's noise ordinance. So now we have a way to enforce that. You can call Captain Meesmer and they can send somebody over. But without that, there's no way. Say you're allowed or you're not allowed. You can, you can do it at six A M. You can do it at five A M. If you choose to do so. This was again, as we tried to kind of go through, put in so we had some kind of ability. We we didn't even know if these guys were inspected or not. You know, when they're dropping and setting up. This at least gives us the opportunity to see their food permit and know what's going on as opposed to. They've dropped a trailer. People got sick, what have you. They're not there to police the hell. He said, but it helps us understand those issues. With this, we have a way to go back and say, look, here are the rules. We're we're not attacking you. We just need you to follow the rules.
Um, we do need to close public hearing, but I did want to go to those that are on the Zoom call with us. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during? This portion of public comments, you can use the raise your hand feature. No one there. Is there anyone else? In person before I close it? With that, public comments are closed. So as Shelley indicated, we can take action tonight. We can defer. So set the pleasure of council with how they would like to proceed.
I'd just like to say, I mean, we have two vape shops on forty nine. Currently today, I know several months ago, there was a food truck set up at one. And it stayed there until the town went and asked it for checkup. Is that true? The question would be, there's a vape shop across the street from it. It could have had a food truck also. So. Here again, I I get the government thing. But you kind of got to nip things in the bud. And if you want that to be there, we certainly can have it. And if you certainly want six story buildings in Harrisburg, we can have that. And I know that sounds very, very hard. But we're not trying, we're just trying to set to be a nice community, a pleasant community. So. We're we're trying to look out for the residents. And before I got on, there were many times people are saying, what is Harrisburg doing? You can put this here, you can put this there, you can put this there. We're trying to make that a nice community. So I I hope that you don't perceive it otherwise. All right, I would motion to the council that we postpone the action tonight, leave it open for thirty days. Let us all digest this and run back through it one more time. See if there's anything that comes to mind, get some feedback from residents. I mean, I don't want to diminish what staff has done and worked on. But I think there's been some good discussions tonight. And I would just encourage us to go for a motion. Thirty day. Second.
So second, all in favor? Any opposed? Great. The motion is carried. That is it for our public hearings. We do not have any old business this evening and one item for new business, and that's the consideration of the contract to upgrade the fire cascade system and Chief Dunn will. Again, save the best for last.
All right. Mayor and council, you're not used to seeing me doing something else besides the month of April. Uh, if you remember, uh, in the October meeting, you saw this on the consent agenda and it was approved. Uh, there's a little bit of change in the pro, uh, uh, project. This project was in in this year's budget, under the capital budget. And of course, was approved and managed well. So a little bit of history about what a cascade system is. Basically, it is a air system. That is highly filtered in order to have. Highly filtered air in our self contained breathing apparatus, which there is a picture up there. And if you've seen pictures of firefighters. You'll see that that's something that they wear on the back. And that's probably where we go into. Any type of environment that that causes us to need to breathe clean air.
And it's very heavy.
The mayor's had it on. Uh, the other two pictures, the one at the top right is a system that we currently have at Station One. That is fixed to the station. And then the other picture is actually a mobile cascade system with air that is on our rescue truck and is mobile. And that truck is actually at Harrisburg Station Two on Rockford Road. So I say all that to say, so currently, the original pro- project called for upgrading our system to a seven thousand P S I system. We have since found out basically that we don't need to do a seven thousand P that P S I system. We can drop that down to a six thousand P S I system. And essentially what that does is it lowers the budget of what we have in this project. And will allow us to purchase an additional compressor that we can put at Station Two. And be fixed there in order to fill the mobile station or mobile compressor that is on the rescue truck that's at Station Two. Here's a picture of the compressor that we're proposing to purchase within the same amount of budget. It's actually twenty dollars less. But this compressor would go at Station Two. Uh, that particular apparatus that has the mobile air system would be able to remain at Station Two and be able to be filled there. It would also help us at our training grounds where they're using air to go into burn environments at the training grounds. And then they could go up and refill. Their bottles there as well. So essentially, the project changed where we have the opportunity. Uh, because we're going from a seven thousand system to a six thousand system, that savings will allow us to purchase within the same budget, this compressor, Station Two. So we asked for approval to do the updated project.
Chief Dunn. I applaud you for thinking out of the box. I have no issue approving such a change, especially over the years that I've served on this council and as many things that we've approved for your department. This is a a nice pleasant surprise. So thank you. And and I appreciate you looking at it from a way that you found a a better solution and it stays local. Where you guys don't have to travel. So yes, sir, I appreciate it.
There any other questions for Chief Dunn? With that, is there a motion to approve the contract to complete a motion on the floor? Or a second?
Second.
To get that, Janet. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. I did want to backtrack and make sure that I did not miss anything on. Ron and I were talking on the public hearing in the U D O text minute. The motion was to defer for thirty days. Is that all we need to do with that? Okay, just wanted to double check. Right, right.
You can open it again if you want to.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. And action items. Um, I would, the only thing I had written down was that if there's any additional questions or feedback about this U D O text amendment. That we communicate that before this comes back before council in February. Did you have any other items on that?
I had a couple, um, quick things and not necessarily action items, but points to note were to check into the communications on some of these more important, you know, legislative. Issues to to see if there are any other ways. And that will be on, uh, one of the items that we'll discuss during our our retreat is our investment and and where we want to put it. With the, uh, looking into Caldwell Industrial Park Data Center and and see if there's anything brewing on Charlotte's side. There as well as, um, a few items related to the, uh. The public hearing we had about whether we could do a one time inspection, nonprofit exemptions, things like that.
Perfect. Um, we do not have a need for closed session this evening. So with that, is there a motion on the floor to adjourn this evening's meeting? Motion. Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening.